Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's almost the appointed hour. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session for Monday, March 28, 2022. Now wait till it hits seven o'clock exactly, so. There we go. So now we have for our first item for discussion tonight, the Fort Silicon Park Turf Infield Project Expansion Overview. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's almost the appointed hour. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session for... Boy, that's scary. Yeah. Yeah. I've got to bleep out, but. Yeah. It's a good thing, so I can retract my words. So we'll call on Ms. Dodsworth, our Parks, Recreation and Community Services Director, to give us kind of an overview and lead the conversation. I know we have many friends here from Pierce College, and perhaps we can introduce them as part of our overview. Ms. Dodsworth, is that okay?
Yes.
Feel free to come up and introduce yourselves. There's a mic there if you'd like. I don't know who's going to speak on behalf of the college.
I can introduce the group as we get ready for the presentation.
Absolutely.
And then they could maybe, if they have comments towards the end.
Sure.
That might be easier, so. Anyway, Mayor and City Council, thank you. I'm Mary Dodsworth, your Parks and Recreation and Community Services Director, and I'm here tonight to talk about our Fort Silicon Park Infield Project, to give you an update and just make sure everybody's on the same page regarding our expansion. I would like to first introduce our team here. We have Stacy Redding, and I'm not sure you've had a chance to meet her. She's our Capital Projects Coordinator, and so she works with us on all of those projects that we have coming up and that we're getting ready to start. And so we're really excited to have her with us. And then we have with us from Pierce College, we have Dr. Julia White. She's the President of Pierce College. Duncan Stevenson, he's the Athletic Director. We have Sylvia James, and she is the Keeper of All Resources. And then we have Gus Lim, and I believe you work with Capital Projects as well and other projects at the college. So we've been working together as a team on this project for many, many months. And I believe online, we have Eric Gold, and he's our designer, and he's been helping us do the work, the cost estimating and the detail work on this project. And so if there's a technical question that you have that we can't answer, he's here to provide some more detail. And he's with DA Hogan, and they... Oh, you can see his picture there. And this is what they do. And so if it's not necessarily a question regarding this particular project, but maybe this kind of field in general or types of use, he can provide some more information because he's definitely an expert. We're really happy to have him on our team as well. So just as a start, I wanted to kind of go through the initial scope. Although you probably haven't looked at it for a while, but although in our initial ILA with Pierce College, we clearly outlined that the hope was to build a home field here at Pierce Col... or here at Fort Silicon Park. This is, this is what the scope is, and this is the picture that was associated with our first ILA. But anyway, I just wanted to identify the three fields or the four fields, so when I'm referring to them, you know what we're talking about. We have Field 1, 2, 3, and 4. 1 is closest to the main gate, and 4 would be closest to what are soccer fields and Angle Lane along Silicon Boulevard. And the idea initially was to do four turf infields at Fort Silicon Park, create a home field for Pierce College. We were each putting 1.6 million in with a total of 3.2 million budget to do all of this work. And the idea at the beginning was, as we noted in the original ILAs, the hope was to create a home field with enhanced dugouts, batting cages, a press box, a scoreboard, storage, spectator seating, and some other safety amenities. And the idea was that with the budget that we had, that we would be able to do that. And as we got into, a little more into design, realized that the scope that Pierce College had imagined from the beginning wasn't going to be able to be done with the 1.6 investment that they were making. And so we have since expanded that, looked at what the true costs would be, and want to present those to you tonight. So the expanded scope is now looking at a number of amenities. I'm going to go into more detail for each one in a little bit, but it does look at a larger footprint than we might have originally been expecting. The increased expense would be 2.87 million, which is a commitment Pierce College has agreed to if we are able to move forward. So the total overall budget is just over $6 million. So that's, that's quite a bit of an increase in project scope. And then this is a rendering that was done. The one before was a rendering done by our consultants to help us get a better idea of what we're looking at. And again, we'll go into more detail. And then there was a request for, did we have any renderings from what it would look? This is a bird's eye view, obviously. You might never be up on the highest pole to see it from this view, but it does give an overview of what the site would look like. Not sure that... Oh, you can see this a little bit. Here is the road coming into the park around the corner. You can see there's the parking lot for the restroom facility and the playground. So that's the location that it would be. And this would be sort of a view from Fort Silicon or from Silicon Boulevard. It's not as clear because, of course, you're going to be traveling 40 miles an hour, maybe 45 if you're late for a meeting. And also there is, you know, the hedge, there's a trail, there's a separation of land before you get to the fields. But this would be that, that side of it. You can see from this side, you can see the backstop would be the batting cage, the scoreboard in the background, and then that would be looking out towards the park. So again, these are just some of the elements that were proposed initially and are part of this current design that we'll be looking at tonight would be artificial turf infield and outfield. We're really focusing on the home field tonight. The other fields are similar to what we've expected to do. We're going to be looking at some field safety fencing, utility improvements to support the improvements, a scoreboard, dugouts with some storage, enhanced dugouts, some bleacher seating for 250 spectators. Currently, there's seating for about 160, so you're not looking at a whole lot more people, but just a different way of getting them into the facility and seating. Of course, providing ADA access for those spectators, batting facility and storage, field lighting, a press box, and a flagpole. So the initial scope included four synthetic turf infields. And at this time, we are still looking at that, four synthetic turf infields. And those Fields 1, 2, and 4 would be basically for all ages and all leagues, even though the real little ones don't play there because it is a full-size baseball field. And the backstop is so far away from the home plate that, you know, the little ones, like the coach pitch and the T-ballers, they spend all their time running around trying to find the ball. So they usually don't play on a field of this size, but it is, we have pegs for 60-foot bases all the way to 90-foot bases, which is typically what the older kids and adults use. But this is just to show you that it would be now infield synthetic turf on the full field for the home field for Pierce College. And that would also include, it'd be a regular rubber infield synthetic turf with drainage. And we haven't specifically defined the age group for the full field because it'll depend on mounds, portable mounds, and then, you know, the number of bases for, for multiple use after, when it's not just being used for Pierce College. So just to kind of go over some of the improvements that would be a part of this proposed design. So we'd be looking at safety, fencing and safety because, of course, when you're starting to play ball, you want to make sure you're protecting not just the people inside playing, but also people that are on the outside of the ball field. So you'd be looking at keeping our remaining backstops that are already there. So we're not changing that, so you can see those sizes are about between, I think, 32 to 35 feet tall. So then, kind of hard to see this one, but just from the backstop, you'd have 25-foot-high baseline foul territory fencing for when, you know, you hit a foul ball, so it stays within the baseball diamond area. Around the perimeter of the park, you would have this 10-foot-tall perimeter fencing. And the idea is to put some windscreen on there so you can't see through it during the baseball season so that it, again, doesn't provide the distraction from the outside. And I don't know if, if any of you have been by Fort Silicon in the last week or so, but we did put up our temporary fencing in this last week. We've got two of the fields up. We'll be finishing that this week for baseball season. And so you can see the footprint that we have right here is just about the footprint that we use now with our temporary fencing. Just, this would be obviously enhanced fencing. And then there'll be additional seasonal windscreen and safety netting. So you can see, this is kind of hard to see, but where the road is right here. If you can see my little pointer right here, I'm just going to move it back here so you can see it right here. So there's some enhanced fencing there, and then right here. And again, that was for screening, and they're in strategic locations so that, just for protection and to keep the balls inside. Oh, excuse me. I'm just going to emphasize this, too. I talked about seasonal fencing. So this is just some examples of fencing that could be here along the edge again, so you can't see through it. And mainly, you know how many cars drive through there. People are walking through there, walking their dogs, flying their kites. So again, it's to keep that distraction from the batter at home plate so that there's, again, that's for safety. Overhead lighting for just this field is being proposed as well. So there'd be utility improvements that would be bringing electricity to areas of the field so we could use it for security lighting, the scoreboard, the batting cage dugout and press box would need electricity. And then, of course, the outfield lighting, which would be conforming to city design standards. And the main design standard isn't so much this height of the pole, but it's the fixture that's used to push the light down so you have, you know, the dark skies legislation and our codes that we have. So it keeps the light on the field and doesn't bleed out beyond that for neighbors or Western State or the fields outside. So the other thing that we'd be doing is enhancing the dugouts. And so that would make them, right now, there's chain-link fence with blue tops. So for the two dugouts in this area, you would provide player area with seating, the area next to it, where you can see the Raiders emblem, would be a storage area within the dugouts that would be secure, be masonry construction. And it would, they're looking at creating, this is a good time to introduce that. They're looking at creating the maroon color scheme that is the Pierce College school colors to have that be consistent throughout the field to show this is their home field for their school. And then there'd be a scoreboard in the outfit, an electronic scoreboard. It would be located just off of the right field location. There, the idea is, is creating this scoreboard that has a diff, an extra truss over the top so that they can put a facility name there. And of course, they would follow and, as part of the future, is be requesting a name. And I'm not even sure that Pierce College has come up with exactly how they want to potentially name the field, but they'd be bringing that to City Council for your approval, of course, because we have a naming ordinance that's being updated right now. And so the idea is that they may want to name that after Pierce College or maybe an individual. But also, on the bottom, there could be a sponsor, opportunity for sponsorship on the bottom of the scoreboard. So it's being designed for this enhanced scoreboard, and then council would get to make the decision on how that might look or if they want to have that kind of extra name and impression on that facility. And again, in the maroon color for the Raiders. So bleachers and press box, it's something that they dreamed about and having. And so this, this rendering makes it look a little bit more big or in large than, than it might be. But basically, it would provide up to 250 seats. It would be raised, and it would be ADA accessible. And so if you've been to, you know, you can get in, get up, and get into the bleachers. Again, we're looking at 250 seats. Currently, we just have bleachers on both sides of the field, and it supports about 160 visitors. So this would just be almost 100 more visitors. And it would also include this press box so that they could announce the games and record the games and have that be a part of that whole experience. And then I just wanted to show you that rendering, you know, this is a little bit more in line of what you would see out there. Kalamazoo. The other idea is that they'd like to create a batting area with some storage for all of their things that they need for running a baseball program and taking care of turf. So you're looking at a prefab structure similar to what we have for some of our prefab restrooms at the park. It would be 40 by 120. This would be masonry construction with the brick on the bottom, which, again, is similar to what we have at, at our parks, at some of our restroom buildings. And it would have a chain-link fence around it, again, to provide security here so you don't have people playing in there or sleeping in there. And then it'd be two tunnels for batting practice. And they're looking to, again, have the bottom portion of it painted to match the colors. And then this is where it would be. So it would actually be between the two fields. Right now, on the, on Fields 1 and 2, this is Field 3. Fields 1 and 2 has a Connex container between the two fields. You've probably seen that out there that we use for storage. Maybe you haven't noticed it. You will now when you drive by. But anyway, this would be a facility that would be between the two fields that could be accessible for, again, storage, for maintenance equipment, and, and then batting practice. And then our next steps, of course, after tonight, well, we're happy to answer more questions to give you an update on what's happening. But the next would be to receive consensus that you're happy with where we're going and the preliminary design so that we can finish and move forward and start looking at permitting. We would amend our design contract a little bit because, of course, we're putting more in here than we initially proposed. And so we want to make sure that we can finish that design contract. We bring that back to council. We'd be working on ILA number 3. We have ILA number 1, which focused on the fact that we all agree this was a good idea to move forward. ILA number 2 was talking specifically about the investment made between Pierce College and the city, which at that time was 1.6 million each for a $3.2 million project. And then ILA number 3 is proposed to talk about how that shared use might work, how we're going to take care of maintenance, what's the long-term use agreement for replacement of turf, et cetera. And then, just to clarify, ILA number 1, just as a, for responsibilities perspective, and this isn't going to change, we don't anticipate that changing, is, the city is in charge of, is, will do the routine maintenance, and we are the operator of Fort Silicon Park. We are the fiscal agent of the product, project. We are managing the construction of the project. We will coordinate all the permits and all of the necessary updates for the facility. We will manage and make all the final decisions regarding construction, and we will own the facility at the end and be responsible for maintenance, management, and operations. So the 6.608 million dollar investment would end up being property of the city of Lakewood. We would have an agreement with Pierce College. They will certainly provide details and documentation, and they will help make timely payments for the cost based on their investment, which they provided a letter of commitment for those resources. They will, they'll also, of course, work on maintenance and operations and scheduling because, of course, they're going to have first rights to use this facility, and we want to make sure that we know when they're in the facility and what needs to be done to take care of that facility. And then they will support future maintenance as needed. So, so that's kind of where we're at for tonight. Oh, and then the last thing is the naming of the field and potential advertising. As you can see on the fence around there, typically, right now, you can see, these are actually pictures of the bottom left and the top right. You can see the windscreen behind the pitcher. And then on this lower field is, I believe it's at Mount Tahoma High School, and you can see they have their banners up that show that they are the district champions or maybe state champions, but they have a pretty important, they have a pretty great program. And then the idea that they could potentially put some advertising banners up there. Again, proof by the city, we probably have a piece of that action. And to just help promote the program. And of course, advertising and sponsorship helps support your operations because you can generate revenue from that. So that's where we're at tonight. We'd be happy to answer specific questions, talk about any of the particular areas. And again, if we can't answer based on what we know, Eric's here for technical information, and then we have our Pierce College team here to give you more information on that as well. Happy to answer your questions.
Got it. Thank you. We've got lots. I'll start with Mr. Anderson. Yes, Mr. Anderson, first. I know Mr. Bokey likely has some.
Thank you. You informally answered my question as to the displacement of soccer fields. And so, though it didn't say it, the answer is yes, it will displace some of the many soccer fields. To what extent?
So it won't, it won't displace. The only thing that we use on this area right here with Field 3 is, is the micro teams. And right now, we move them all over the place anyway.
But how many does that displace?
The, the micro fields?
Yeah. This is going to interfere with some use. But to what extent that is that? I mean, it's not, it's not a determining factor, but it's.
Sure. So it won't, yeah, it'll just move them to another location because the micro fields are those.
How, how much?
How many field?
We've got, we've got 300 acres. They aren't going to all be soccer fields. How much does this displace of the existing micro fields?
Well, it will just move them from here to, I don't know, because every season it's different. Some seasons, they may have four micro fields and two under nine. Some seasons, they have one under nine and, and six micros. It really depends on the number of kids.
Okay, have a different question. How many would fit in the space that's going to be blocked off?
Well, 3.
3?
Yeah. Yeah, and we will be able to put those in different locations.
It's, it's not so hard.
No, it's.
I'm concerned about the character of the park and the design fitting in with the park. You know, the barns are one thing, or sheds are another. We, we discussed that at Great Lake with respect to the, the event center, Pavilion, as to it fitting in. To what extent has this been considered in the design? And when are we going to see what it actually looks like?
Well, I think that we've talked about where it was located as part of specifically picking Field 3, so it's not right next to the entrance. So when you drive in, it's quite a distance away from what you see when you first come in. It's right in line with the rest of the ball fields, and so it's in a baseball area. So it's not going to change the character in that regard. We're seeing a pretty good rendering, and as we get more into specific design, you know, right now, these are renderings as to what, based on scale and location, what those different facilities would look like adjacent to the facilities. So we can bring additional information as we, we're still in preliminary design, so.
And normally, in a design approval process, you'll have an architectural quality elevation, which we haven't seen, that one from Fort Silicon or Silicon Boulevard really doesn't show much.
Correct. Right. We're in preliminary design right now. And so we are getting ready to do pre-application, so we wanted to make sure we're all on the same page moving forward because we don't want to spend a bunch of time and money designing something that council's not interested in moving forward with. But we need to, to do, you know, the more detailed design when we, as we move forward, so.
So I understand that the college is interested, interested in branding it. The balance between branding it as a city facility and, and college facility is kind of on a sliding scale, I guess. It's one thing to have a purple scoreboard, it's another thing to have a big purple blob sitting in the middle of the, the facility from the exterior. Is, what's contemplated? If I ask about the colors, does it have to be maroon? Is the, is the plan to have exterior maroon everywhere? Which, in my opinion, wouldn't fit in with the board.
I think the idea is for just the specific location or this specific field, they've requested to use Raider colors to define it as a Pierce College facility at the park. So, I mean, I don't know if it's a game changer, but I think that's the request because of the investment that they're making, and they're looking for a home field for Pierce College baseball. So the, from a color perspective, the, at the other three fields, we have open, the only real colors there are blue roofs for the dugouts, and there's a blue Connex between the two containers. And then in the park, we have green roofs on our picnic shelters, and then the bathrooms are all in some kind of a neutral color, so, with gray roofs, so.
So what's, how's the maintenance expense going to be broken out?
We haven't gotten to that point yet because we don't have the detailed maintenance for what we're building. But Pierce College is probably going to maintain that facility. I'd say nine months out of the year, we'll maintain our facilities, and then we'll work it out. I mean, we haven't worked out those details. That'll be in ILA number, number four. But they're committed to maintaining the facility that they've invested these resources in, you know, to their best ability to, so that they last the life cycle of that building line.
Have there been any discussions regarding scheduling and revenue? Who gets the money for the Memorial Day Tournament?
I beg your pardon?
Who gets the money when it's rented out for the Memorial Day Tournament?
We, if it's, if it's our city tournament, we get all of the revenue for main, for renting all of the fields when Pierce College isn't in them. And they don't charge for their games, and so, you know, I'm not sure what revenue they would generate. They may do a tournament or two a year to rev, to generate revenue for their operations. But when the city's managing, when the city's reserving and scheduling the tournaments in the facility, the city gets the revenue for it.
Yeah. The reason I'm overly concerned about this is I've been intimately involved with a county agreement for the baseball fields, other fields at Rogers High School and Ziger Elementary. It was hurriedly pushed through by a county council that was not paying attention. They put $8 million in improvements on school district property. And then the school district decided that they didn't want to pay, and there wasn't any, what they originally had, everybody understood they'd pay. And who gets to schedule what? There was all sorts of detail about, down to an eighth of an inch, how long grass had to be on certain days of the week, practically. It was like 50 pages of maintenance detail and nothing about who paid, who scheduled, when it was due, what the actual control was, what happens at the end of the day. So the, it's the devil's in the details thing. We, we have one chance to do it right. And just because we, everybody's getting along today and thinks we have an understanding of what's supposed to happen, I'm very concerned about it being all written down, understood by both sides. And then you put the contract in the door, and you never have to look at it, so.
No, we'll have, we'll, we'll work on that, and we'll be bringing that back to council, of course. And it will have those details on scheduling and on maintenance, on replacement. That was something that council requested to be included in that. And then, of course, the revenue, you know, what that breakup, what that breakdown would be, so. Absolutely.
Thank you.
And who pays for what? Not just the construction, but the after, you know, cut the ribbon, so.
I think I have a good understanding from the presentation that you have of what the vision is. And I think that the vision creates an exceptionally good home field for Pierce College. However, from the city's perspective, as Councilman Anderson taught it, one of the most important considerations is the nature of the park. And we have always gotten in citizen surveys and feedback from multiple sources. Fort Silicon Park is described as a crown jewel, and it has attributes of natural areas, places for passive and active recreation by the community to be able to go through and, and, and do this. And the original concept, and you know, and one of, one of the elements of that was what I, what I would call the green. It extended from the gate all the way to Angle Lane. It had that huge green lawn that was, it was, it was used for organized athletic events, but it was extensively used for casual, open space use by, by the community. This is essentially sitting right in the middle of that where you're, you know, essentially the fencing is going to run from the road to nearly to the Silicon Boulevard, at least to the, to where the sewer line is, to, to, to go that. Essentially, it blocks it off in the middle, cuts that in half. And with a 10-foot fence completely around it, I'm envisioning that the casual use value of that, in addition to being a big structure that sits right in the middle of the park that may not necessarily fit in, gets us to the same sort of thing that happened at Harry Lang Stadium. At Harry Lang Stadium, it used to be a grass turf field with a cinder trap. And it was, when not in use by Clover Park High School, it was available to the public. People were able to go there, spend time to be able to do that. Within months of them synthetically. Within months of them synthetically surfacing it. Fences and gates went up, it became no longer an asset to the community, an asset only to. To, to, to the, the school district or by reservation to be able to go and do that. And making this big of a piece of the park in that way to do that. The original concept didn't seem to do that to me. It was still gonna maintain the, the, the green lawn, there was still gonna be some ability for. Both casual and organized use by the, by, by the community. And it wasn't going to, as much as this would detract from the. Seem to be out of place in the park is, 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 is the community. He currently envisions it to be able to go and do that. So I would much rather stay with the original. Concept that we agreed to, that is going to have. Some maybe even good utility to Pierce College, but not as great a utility as this. But this is just out of place where, where, where it is, it seems to me. Like Councilmember Anderson, again, I, I, I'm working off the renderings we're able to see today. Okay, being able to, to go, go and do that, but. I don't think the fact that you have something that costs millions of dollars. The fact that someone else is going to provide the funding doesn't necessarily mean that it's a good enhancement. Of the park, I think it's. It's a detractor from, 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 from the goal of having quality open space. Available to the community, because we're, because we're taking that away. And we're not sort of creating a really good space for Pierce College to use, but that it's. For, for much of the year, the community would be excluded. For some casual use of it, to be able to go and do that. I'm a little less concerned about maintenance costs and things, because like Stottsworth says. If you write the agreement well, you, 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 you don't end up with surprises there. And, and so I think that, 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 that if we went ahead with either the original. Concept or this expanded concept, you know. We, we get to the point of where we, we, we do our due diligence on a maintenance agreement and, and, and it, and it would be fine and be fair. To, to everyone who's looking to do that. But I just think the, the scope of the expanded scope is too much. For Fort Silicon Park and not in keeping with what folks would like Silicon, Fort Silicon Park. To remain or not in line with what they'd like it to evolve into.
Ms. Farmer. I have questions when you guys are done.
I, I don't share the concerns that my fellow council members do. I'm not sure that this is completely out of place. I'm, I believe that Fort Silicon Park is big enough to handle both active and passive uses. I'd like to see more, I think, of, of renderings to really get a feel for it. I do have a question to, to Councilmember Branstadter's point. The legacy park plan and there have been some fairly recent. Public participation questions and, and answers and I'm curious if there's a synopsis of. Of what they saw the future being, I'm pretty sure I remember them asking for more athletic fields and so I'd be. I'd be curious to see, obviously this is for Pierce College and I don't, to the branding piece. I don't have a problem if it's branded for, for the home field, that, that makes complete sense to me as a sports fan, so. And there are, there are plenty of opportunities, plenty of examples of, of. City and university partnerships to that, to that effect, so it doesn't seem odd. Doesn't seem odd on its face to me.
Thank you, Ms. Boki, Ms. Deputy Mayor Morris, did you have some thoughts, questions?
Thank you, I, I, I have a hard time envisioning before I see something actual. I don't see how that's gonna take away from the park because it's in one area, it's in a section of the park. And when you spread it out, the colors could be enhanced, actually, because of the colors that we're using, so. I'm a kind of in the dark on that one. Other than that, I like the idea, I like the colla-collaboration with the college. And I hope we can come to a conclusion where it's gonna work for all of us.
I had just a couple of logistical questions, years ago when we were talking about the artificial turf for the infield. I had never really contemplated what artificial turf on the larger outfield might look and feel like. And so I guess a threshold question is. What's the value of having artificial turf as opposed to the natural grass, it's really beautiful and. You know, nicely mown, like some of the great stadiums around, I suppose it's a maintenance issue in the Northwest with water and all that sort of stuff.
Absolutely, provides more year-round play, it, you don't have delays or cancellations based on water. When it rains, so it drains down, so you'd be able to play on the fields during those seasons. Right now, it's clay surface, grass in the outfield, you have, you know, divots and water collection. So that's, that's the main thing, it's in Washington State, it lasts longer play. The problem that we have on all of these four fields right now is they're all native soils. So if you were to say you didn't put in the artificial turf, but you maybe added lights or you added expansion. When you wear it down, then you have to rest it longer, so you, you just don't have those same kinds of impacts when it's the artificial turf.
And the stuff holds up pretty well long term?
It has about.
Does Cheney have this stuff out there, is that what Cheney uses?
Yeah, oh, yeah, 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 and that's full, so we have, it's about a ten-year lifecycle. It says eight to twelve, but ten's about, you know, we take good care of our things, so they last typically to, for the lifecycle, but that's about a turf lifecycle there.
Yeah, cost to replace would probably be a couple million bucks at some point down the road.
Probably about, for the, it's probably seven fifty a field and then you have. You know, efficiencies by doing more than one at the same time, so, but you, the big expense is putting the drainage in and so you don't have to do that again.
Right, you gotta tear up.
Infrastructure's already there, Eric could probably talk about that, but we can get that information for you on replacement costs. And it's just, it's just, you know, it's a more professional outdoor experience when you have your outfield turf. You know, Mariners use, Mariners have turf all the way to the, all the way to the fences, so.
Well, speaking of professional outdoor experiences, the one that's not so fun is the one bathroom that's over there. That as you run past it, it gets a little smelly. That one, it's not the newer one by the kids playground, it's that one out there.
Yeah, it is.
What are, what are the opportunities for enhancing that, given the capital infrastructure work you're doing?
It's not the bathroom, the bathrooms are clean, it is the sewer line that runs along there and it's some kind of release. We've talked with Pierce County several times about, you know, is it a release valve, is it a flow? One, but they've done, it seems to be operating fine, but you're right, it smells like.
I don't know, they're friends of mine creating problems over there.
Yeah, so it's the sewer line and so we're trying, we're not exactly sure. What, the last time, this summer, we had sort of an aha moment. We were thinking that it might actually have something to do with the restroom by the playground. Because there's a line that shoots it out to there, that maybe it's something to do with the pump there, so. We recognize that because it's, you know, people are like, thinking it's the bathroom, but it's not, it's the sewer line, so that's an ongoing conversation.
Is it sufficiently sized for potentially another two hundred and fifty some odd observers in a game in a given evening? That's the challenge.
Yeah, it's not, it's really ninety more people, because there's, there's already seating for a hundred and sixty, so we're not looking at expanding that. And you know, thousands of people come through that park every single day, so we've got the facilities there and the facilities there and the. So it's certainly, you're capable, it's, I think it's a hundred and twenty-three flushes an hour is what each toilet does, something like that, so.
So the parking.
Opposed to a Santa Can who's a hundred and twenty-five visits, that's it.
Visits, yeah, exactly. And it has a different smell.
Yes, similar smell, actually, sometimes.
So the, the parking in the back there where we have the farmer's market has expanded, that would obviously be existing and serve for. Visitors and spectators and that whole thing and that should be plenty, I assume, right?
It is, I mean, I think it works now and again, we're not changing capacity except for adding additional seating and, you know, I'm not sure. If there's a giant following for Pierce College baseball, I think they're hoping for that, but when we have tournaments. You know, it, the parking lot does fill, we do have the parking across the place now where you can walk to it. We've expanded parking in other areas to support it, but, you know, it, it meets the needs of, for a baseball tournament at this point.
And then. Part of it's just a scale thing, I mean, I need to go out and walk it and take a look at it. And it would be interesting to have some ten-foot sections just set up, just so we can see how that visually would look.
Well, the fencing out there is now, I think, I think it's, I beg your pardon? That's around there right now, I think it's taller than that, isn't it? Oh, was it four feet? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that would kind of be visually helpful as part of this conversation to me, just to see, because. It's a big swath of turf for sure over there, but not that it necessarily isn't compatible, I just would like to see how the visual impact is. As best we can, you know, it's, it's tough to do.
Oh, they don't have it back there, yeah, so, I mean, I'm a visual person as well and so oftentimes when we're building the gateways or doing things, I have.
Yeah.
People hold up posts so that I can get the visuals, so we could, we could do something like that if you wanted to schedule a field trip.
Taking a look, yeah, and then the, the final question I think I had, just in terms of a, a point of interest for the ILA down the road. In terms of scheduling games, the, the one thing that we'd want to be mindful of, I think. In setting our summer concert series is that they wouldn't necessarily be on a game night because the sound traveling would be competing. I think, because it's pretty darned close to that corridor where you get sound through there. It's, it's, can be challenging with kids playing at the playground if you have a concert. If you have a, you know, a great game and a lot of fun people that are having a good time and enjoying themselves, it might be a lot of noise travel back and forth.
I think they typically play on Saturdays and Sundays, so I don't think.
Is that right?
Problem with their concerts.
Oh, okay, well, that helps, yeah, yeah. Which again, makes some sense to have artificial turf because your season is wet. Yeah.
I was gonna just follow up too with Councilmember Farmer's question was that when we did the initial master plan for this park. That we council approved many years ago, and then also what the legacy plan is, is that people are passionate about that park. And if you did ask ten different people, they'd have ten different ways of how you'd like to use it. But what we have sort of focused for the majority of the park is, is that the sportfield areas are really active area. We've done improvements in that area down to about the barns. We, the master plan, the soccer field's actually extending past. The end of Angle Lane that way, we have an, you know, a, a long Silicon Boulevard, but this is sort of our active sports area and that's what was defined. And it was also focusing this area, again, closer to the road, closer to the front of the thing as the economic engine for, you know. Fort Silicon, although it is everybody's favorite backyard, it is the site that the city has used in the past to generate. Economic impact positive for, you know, when there's someone's coming to a tournament, besides the heads and beds. You know, they're going to Albertson's and Safeway and Subway and Target and they're buying fuel. And so there is positive impact to the community when you bring folks for one or two or three days to that area, so.
Just a comment, if someone, anyone wants to see kind of state-of-the-art turf on both soccer and baseball fields. In action in the rain, this is a good time of year. The new Tacoma Hunt Middle School has a, a sports complex built around it, I think it was done. There's a, there's some youth rec YMCA, Boys and Girls Club or something involved in the, in the planning of that too. So, but it's, it's a very large complex and there's probably the most turf in one place. Artificial turf in one place that I've seen, next to Oregon's practice facility, but. And the edge of that coming to the road, is it like right on the road or is there a little walking area around it, it's hard to tell?
Um, to the road, the road, the internal road?
Right.
Yeah, you'd be able to walk on the backside of it from one, and one end to the other, it wouldn't go all the way up to the road. There's actually a walking path along that road, you know, that's separated with a curb, so it wouldn't go all the way up to that, you'd have a separation.
So. The, you know, this always gets to the heart of the matter, that I've always supported the park as a regional facility. Because years ago, I felt that there were people who looked at it as a neighborhood park, right? It was always this balance and, and we've always, I think, supported as a neighborhood. Or as a regional facility and we've done a lot of work out there. I, I am worried about the scale and I think we've always had this delicate balance between. Doing development out there, making improvements and the, and, and. There's still a few folks out there that would just love it if we had never done anything. The, the famous, a woman told me, not even twenty years ago, I'm not even sure I want bathrooms. Right, because it would bring the wrong element in. And that was, that was what she told me and I'm like, I'm, I'm not, and because it was her park, right? It was her and her dog's park and, and that's what they were using it for. And I know in the past, up at the field closer to. The corner that, and this goes long past. That Pierce College made improvements to that field, that's why it's better than, than most of the other fields. And that was before the other improvements were made to the park even. So I think that there's, you know, I'm, I'm really struggling with the balance of, of what. Of what we're trying to do, we want activities, does that fit? And spatial relations is not my strong suit, to put it mildly. So, but I, 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 I see and I hear Councilmember Branstadter. And I, and I find myself agreeing with him that, yeah, right there in the middle of the park may be a, maybe a, a tougher cell than. Than. Than what we think and so. I, I, I think I'd like some public comment on it, I think I'd like the parks word to look at the plan. I'd like them to understand what this thing says and I, and I, and I do think we need to. Have some public input. I like the lights, I like, I like the turf. I like the ability to be able to use the facility after dark, I just, I don't know that the placement right there is, is, is what we want. Help to flip three and four at all?
There, it had, oh, I'm sorry.
Right, part of the initial conversation too is the direction of where the batter is facing, so some of. Part of the initial concern and address of, would be the position that batter is facing with western and southern exposure. That that's a distraction for hitting, so this facing, this, the direction was.
Well, if the ten-foot walls, it'll block out all the sun, so shouldn't.
Also, I wanted to clarify that the fencing is chain-linked and some of those advertising and screening. Banners are removable, so.
So it is chain-linked, it's not like a solid.
The idea is to put a, a windscreen on it.
Right.
But again, those are additional amenities that are, that are flexible, if that's a concern, you could still see through it and. Then, you know, maybe that's, that's more accepting of the council. And, and, you know, initially, we did look at which field would be best, and if it was on field four, it would expand into soccer. You know, it would, it would offend, and those are our full, full-sized fields, and so that's really where, you know, the older kids, where we have all of the weekend leaves.
So the area that we did the new stuff over there, that's where all the new soccer fields kind of on the far edge.
Yes, yes, and then just past that, and then field one, of course, I think is the field that was original Charlie Peterson Field. That's where Pierce College's home field was in the seventies, when they started this program, they started here, so they're kind of excited about coming back home. But my concern was, is similar to, I think, Councilmember Branstad's concern is, is that with that field at field one, that would be the first thing you saw when you came in, and it would be, it would change the feel. You know, most people are coming to the park and they're heading to the, the lake, they're heading to the dog park, they're heading to the playground, or maybe coming here to walk or play baseball or soccer, but it would just be a real visual impact right away. This is really quite a bit, quite a bit of distance between the front and that, so it would, it wouldn't be your first impact when you got to the parks.
Mr. Anderson.
So when, conceptually, just to me, when we've talked about lighted fields before, I always thought about the first field being the lighted field. Has a traffic safety study or review of this taken place? Because moving it down there and off the end of the, of the parking lot, we don't have any lights in, in the park going down there, do we?
There's lights all along Stillicum Boulevard, that whole area is lit up at night.
So we're relying on the streetlights on Stillicum Boulevard, but coming in, we're inviting people into the park. I, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm just concerned that we don't create a situation where we're having pedestrians in the dark, because normally the park's not open.
Correct, yeah, there'd be security lighting and pedestrian lighting.
I don't know where the sidewalks are, where this, how the street lighting works, what the lumens are gonna be at the entrance, if somebody's parked on the other side, uh, how they get, how they find their car, those, those kind of things. If, when it was, in, in my mind, I always dismiss that, if it's one in the corner, that's pretty well, that corner bleeds in, people just come in, they're right there.
They would probably park in the, they'd probably come in and park in the parking area, which would be hopefully away from the pedestrian.
If there's extra ones, they're gonna be on the other side, yeah, and so, just it's really a, a traffic engineer look at it instead of a parts look at it.
There's a great field liability for traffic.
Oh, of course, yeah, safety and liabilities are number one concern always, so we'll check that out.
Any other questions, folks? Next steps, it sounds like we might want to have a little bit more, how does that work if we have PRAV taking another look at it? Have they looked at this yet?
Uh, they looked initially on the conversation, so, you know, I, I have to say that I think this concept is what Pierce College was always imagining, and so I think it was a matter of funding, and that's why it's, we're bringing it back, because, you know, one point six versus, you know, four and a half million is a big change. But we, we can take it back to Park Board at the end of the month and find out, you know, I guess, what their thoughts are regarding this, but because they haven't seen this exact presentation, we're just providing that to council for direction. So the slide before here is really kind of, you know, what we, what we need to move forward. You know, we are in preliminary design, we do want to do pre-application, you know, we're working on the ILA, but it'll all sort of depend on what we build, so that's why we're looking for direction from council to whatever that move forward is.
Would it be worth, I'm throwing it out for council, having a sort of a mini study session with PRAV on this? Just to expedite the conversation. I don't know whether we can weave in what Mr. Bokey's asked about in terms of public comment, and that might really lengthen this process beyond beyond where the college and our Parks Department contemplated this going. What do you think, Mr. Branstad?
Well, I think that I don't mind having a joint meeting with the PRAV in terms of looking at it, but I would like to do it after either they or us have done something in the nature of Mr. Trivoki's concern that this is a significant deviation from what the public is expecting to be in the park, to, to have some public comment, to be able to go and look at it. And I think both we and the PRAV would benefit from that, maybe that we ask the PRAV to, to do something to get public comment. Hold a hearing or, 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 or schedule a charrette for, that, that the public can come and look at it, or, 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 or whatever. You know, and maybe even the, the college would, 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 would want to, to host it so that because the one thing that I haven't heard, okay, is from the college's perspective, the community value of, of, of what's proposed. I understand the the value to the sports athletic program, okay, to be able to, 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 to go and do that. But with this placement, that, you know, what's the community value that offsets what the community loses? Because the community loses open space, I mean, and you, you're taking up a large area and putting a ten-foot fence around it, and requiring that you have permission to be inside. Yeah, so it's no longer a casually available place that unused ball fields are now. So I, 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 I'm, I'm fine with, with letting the PRAV discuss it and give us a recommendation, I'm fine with meeting with them jointly, but either of us, you know, you know, we, I, I think need, need some public input and a process to get the public input.
A couple of thoughts on, just, I'll pop off with a thought on community value. You know, we don't have a quote-unquote professional sports team in Lakewood, obviously, but this would be an opportunity for the community to come and enjoy games that would be more accessible, and have families come and sit in the bleachers that are actually nice bleachers, and a scoreboard that they can actually see, and a, a field that actually is lit and is going to be beautiful. So I think there's some value there to the community, whether those folks who, you know, walk their dogs and love all things nature would find that to be a value is another question, of course, right? Because everyone has their own perspective. Uh, in terms of process, what do you think, Ms. Dodsworth, we can do a charrette maybe at the pavilion with PRAV and us? And then, I don't know how we would then think about going through a sort of public process, just to get feedback, the PRAV does that themselves, right? When they, they go through the legacy planning process, they've done that for just about every, every other major capital piece we've done.
Right, I mean, I, they've reviewed this project several times, when we've done CIP, and we've been talking about this since before COVID, right?
Got it.
It's sort of slowed us down, so we knew, not necessarily the home field, that came apart when, as soon as we announced we were gonna be doing doing four turf fields, that's when Pierce College came forward, and Pierce College is here, they're happy to probably share their thoughts on that.
Yeah, it'd be great, we should, actually.
From them, we're happy to coordinate whatever council needs to make a decision, whether that, you know, the design charrette, we've already sort of, you know, the dis unless we moved it to another location at the park, then you're really changing use, and you're, it would be phenomenally expensive to start.
At this point, it's a question of maybe less color on the masonry and more on the sidewalks.
Correct, if that's something that, yeah, maybe there's some different options to consider, so, but just as a, you know, to take a look at the visual, maybe we could get some photos, or locate some places that have similar kinds of facilities to provide more of a visual if people need that. Again, going out to the park now, you can kind of see the footprint, so you'll see what that footprint is. Certainly, we're looking at something more expanded, but you can get a feel, because it is different when you're out there standing by it, and driving by it. And, you know, it's about an acre, this is probably acre and a half in size, the ball field's about an acre, when you look at the outfield and everything around it, so you know, it, we're, we're honing down in this little teeny twenty-acre area of the park where it is, but we could, but we can do that, we can do whatever. Council believes, and Park Board's happy to host something, they're happy to meet on a regular night or a different night. You know, they're a pretty flexible group, and we just met last week, so, you know, they're not gonna be meeting again for a month, so that could delay kind of our process a bit, but.
They could always have a special meeting.
Yeah, they're happy to do that, they're happy to have a special meeting, you know, they're, they can, they care about these issues, and they want to make sure things are done properly, and they're happy to give you their feedback as well. They've approved this as in concept, because it was part of our many CIPs and budgets and all of that, so this isn't a new topic to them, this is, it would be a new presentation to them, they haven't seen.
Right, the enhanced version, Deputy Mayor Walsh, you had a question though, I thought? Okay, Mr. Anderson.
That was my question, what, what stage was this at the last time a subject was visited by PRAV?
I'd have to go back, I'm not exactly, I mean, what stage was it at? I'd have to go back and double check.
Was it still a two-million-dollar project, or was it a six-million-dollar project?
Well, the six-million-dollar project has always been shown to them as a two-million-dollar project. So the, the, the picture that we showed at the very beginning with the four fields, but the enhanced field there, that.
Well, what, what, what stage was that discussion at that time? Was it two million dollars that they were talking about, or was it this six-million-dollar project?
It was, it was two million at the time, because that was what the budget was, but they, but the, that was the, what they saw. That's what council saw as well, but, so the idea was that, I think, Pierce College thought they were gonna be able to build what they wanted with the two million dollars, or actually three-point-two million dollars. But when we started putting budgets to fences and poles and lighting and things, it, it, they couldn't get as much as they wanted. So when we looked at the, this chart that we provided in your, in your packet, it shows kind of what they could get for the one-point-two million, or one-point-six, one-point-six for three, that, that's what they would be looking at, so it was.
That would have included all the, all the turf, four turf infields for one-point-four million, the fencing and some grading to accommodate the fencing for four-hundred thousand, the base electrical improvements, so just anything underground that would accommodate the lighting for a hundred and sixty-five thousand, scoreboard, tenanting display, dugouts, masonry, storage, and a different bleacher configuration that still accommodated the same amount of people, but didn't have the wrap around the press box configuration, that's more of a custom layout.
Did we have the full turf all the way back?
No, it was just the infield at the time.
That's, that's a big difference.
It was, was a fencing, permanent fencing at the time they considered it?
Yeah, it was permanent fencing.
So, we know now that, since then, the, the concept has added outfield, artificial turf. What other additions have there been made? Just additions?
The lighting, so this would be, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Which? The chart, okay. Have it, can you put that on there? It's in the packet, I don't have it in this.
I don't see it.
But anyway, I'll just, if we can pull up, that would be great, but we have it in your, you have it in your packet, so we could pull that up. So it would, it did, it included infield, but not the full X, all the way to the end. It included the electrical improvement, but not the lighting, so that, that did not include lighting, but this does. It included the press box in the back, and with the press box, you could connect the seating, so it was more of a wrap versus just, you know, fancier bleachers. And.
Batting and storage facility, that's.
Correct, the batting and storage facility.
And the lighting.
And a whole, it's about the same, it's about the same scoreboard, except for it might not have the fancier truss on the top.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would suggest that we just send it to the, the current scope to the PRAV for review and comment. I have a lot of confidence in the skills of those people, there are a lot of, there are parts professionals there who will anticipate pros and cons that I wouldn't possibly think of.
That's probably a good idea.
And I, and that would, I think, maybe give us some comfort going forward.
And we can share with them some of your comments and issues and thoughts tonight as well, so that they are aware of what their, what your concerns are, so they could address that.
But before we leave, I think it's appropriate to invite our friends from Pierce College to share their thoughts and their, their desires and dreams, and how that might positively impact the community.
Well, thank you so much, my name's Julie White, I'm the president of Pierce College, Port Stillicum. And we are, I want to start by saying, we are, of course, all about serving the community, and I really want to thank the work of Dodsworth and her team, our Pierce College team. This has been a long conversation, as I'm sure you know, and lots and lots of work, so thank you for that. And I really just wanted to address the community impact, and hopefully you will forgive me sharing some good information about our school. We are a, a top-ten community college in the country, and we're proud of that, and we're proud to serve Pierce County and the College of Lakewood in particular. And one of the things that I'll say that concerns me about our community is our post-secondary attainment rate. So about two-thirds of Pierce County adults do not have any post-secondary education. And we know that with the changing workforce and labor market demands, it's going to become ever more important for folks to have some kind of post-secondary training in order to provide families sustaining wages, and to be able to really thrive in Lakewood and in Pierce County. So for me, the connection here of a college-city partnership is in part showing the importance of, of, of this, this connection of what the college offers, of the college's commitment to the city by partnering in this way. Certainly, it benefits our program, I, I won't, you know, tell you any otherwise. But I do think that there is a broader mission that we all share, which is to have our communities thrive. And Pierce College is an important part of that in partnership with you. And what we know is that a lot of our young people, and adults as well, don't necessarily see college as a place where they belong. And, you know, the, the reason that Pierce College has received the accolades that we have is because we have been successful, and more successful than many of our peer colleges, of helping folks get to those goals, and again, get to that family sustaining wage. So part of this for me is, somebody comes into the park, and, you know, they don't know anybody who's gone to college, they don't know what college is for them, they get to interface and see college students, college professionals, and, you know, they have that opportunity, and maybe they're not a ball player, maybe there's another sport that they're interested in, or maybe they are just like, hey, I never really thought about Pierce College, which is just right up the hill. So for me, that's also a really important part of anything that we do, and that's, that's what it's all about. We want, we want a great ball field, we want to be able to have our students play, you know, on this quality ball field. We don't have a home ball field, so that's all important to us, but it's the broader picture that is the most important. So I just wanted to make that statement about community commitment and where we're coming from in this partnership. So thank you for letting me speak, and I, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to take, to take them, but I also won't take more of your time.
A question about after the, the season is over, what do we anticipate could be the use for our youth teams for the, is it May, late May-ish, June, July, August timeframe?
Most of our local rec leagues are done about that same time, they're, they're done, they start in April, and they're usually done about that same time. However, we have, we would have full access to it for summer tournaments, and, which is all revenue generating for us. And so we would have full access when, we would have full access to the facility when it's not being used by the college, and that could be during the season as well. But because of you know, daylight in the spring, who knows what the hours are gonna be. Most of the, the kids are playing on, on weeknights as well, and I'm not sure what the schedule would be, whether they, you know, maybe they'd be able to play on it one night, they'd be able to play, you know, we have three other fields out there too, so. And the, our local league is Lakewood Baseball League, and they are, have not, you know, had much participation. Besides COVID, they've really been shrinking in size, a lot of kids that age are moving on to other kinds of private clubs and things like that.
And for years, we have advocated for money from the legislature for lighting and now we're getting some lighting, right? And so it wouldn't be, had we done it ourselves, it wouldn't be much different than what we're going to be seeing on field three, I, I presume. So in terms of getting P RAB going, I would suggest we do or encourage them to have a special meeting. So we can expedite their, their review and have them give us a report back as, as soon as we can. And even if we need to have a, a portion of a study session for that feedback, so we can expedite the process. We don't want to carry too long if we don't need to.
Sure.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Oh, they are still meeting, person, P RAB is? Oh, yeah, should be easy. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Stoudsworth. Now we will turn to the second item for tonight's discussion. It's a review of the fourth quarter twenty twenty-one police report and the annual police report for twenty twenty-one, I guess. Chief Sorrow, you're up.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Whalen and council members. As you'd said, this is the, uh, fourth quarter police report from twenty twenty-one and it will lead into the, the year-end report. Uh, the fourth quarter report is abbreviated compared to what you normally see in a quarterly report, but it's more because it's just, uh, again, it's what leads into the, the year-end report and gives us some of our, our data there. So, uh, let's jump into it. So the, the, the chart that you normally see, uh, one of the things that I'll, I'll draw your attention to is the quarterly percent change from, uh, third quarter twenty twenty-one to the fourth quarter twenty twenty-one, in particular persons crimes. You know, while property crimes always drive our total crime, persons crimes are the ones where people are getting hurt, um, whether it's a shooting or, or other kind of assault. So to see those numbers, uh, come down is encouraging and a positive trend. And with the, you know, as I've said before, every quarter kind of has its own unique character. Uh, so I like to compare each quarter, uh, and you can see we are, um, you know, the, the second highest going back to two thousand sixteen in the fourth quarter. And I'll talk a little bit more about what's driving that here in a bit. So there it is, uh, you know, put graphically the, the trend line for the fourth quarter, uh, uh, or the quarterly reports going back to two thousand eighteen. And I will tell you that, um, when you compare some of these numbers to the annual report, um, you might see some discrepancies in some of the specific numbers. That's just kind of an anomaly. Uh, that's how we pull the numbers. It, they refresh reports and there's kind of a long explanation, but it doesn't change the trend line. The trend lines are the same for, um, uh, all the data.
Mr. Randstetter?
Chief, if I could just ask an understanding question about this slide. When it says total crime incidents slash victims, an incident with three victims, is that reflected as three on this or as one?
No, this would be just, uh, one incident.
So what is the slash victim?
I don't see where you're looking at slash victims.
I'm on the total crime fourth quarters year-to-date. It's a previous slide. It says total crime incidents slash victims.
Oh, that. Um, I would have to, uh, I, I missed that. I would have to talk with our crime analyst to see what, what he was, uh, um, including there. But generally, um, we, I prefer to go by incidents because, and that's NIBR's, the incident-based reporting system that, um, we see. Because, uh, I mean, there, it just makes more sense to me to count a single incident where a couple of people might have gotten, uh, assaulted or victimized as opposed to two or three separate incidents because that is sort of, but I don't know, it just makes it look like more happened than what really did.
I agree. I'm more concerned about the number of incidents than number of victims.
Right.
The way the chart is set up, it's unclear. I will look into that.
Okay, again, moving into persons crimes, and this is a graphic demonstration of what we saw in the first chart with, uh, um, that had the, the data and the percent changes. Um, a significant drop from the third quarter, which again was encouraging. And even if you look historically at, at our quarters going back to two thousand eighteen, um, it's sort of in the middle. We had a few, you know, several that were, uh, higher than that as far as persons crimes, which, um, again, doesn't drive our total crime, but is still where people are getting hurt. And then property crimes. Um, like this is a, you know, we saw, you know, it was just like we saw reductions in almost all persons crimes. We saw increases in almost all property crimes. I do have some, uh, you know, I think explanations for that. And I can point to a different, a couple of different types of property crimes that are driving that. And this I wanted to include just as a graphic representation of what I say when, uh, property crime drives our, our total crime. You could see that this is our property crime graph next to our total crime graph. They look almost identical. And that's, that's what I mean. So when you hear about, you know, our total crime going up, think property crime and not, not persons crimes. Now, these next three slides I think are related somewhat, but this first one is motor vehicle theft. And you, you saw, uh, two hundred forty-one there is, you know, it's a, again, a significant increase from the third quarter and it's been going up steadily, um, even before that, ever since, uh, the fourth quarter of two thousand nineteen. Um, the, the vehicle thefts, we had the two hundred forty-one accounts for about fifteen percent of all property crimes, uh, in Lakewood. So that is a significant problem. Uh, the other driving property crime for that number is just general theft, which, uh, is, you know, retail theft or, um, like catalytic converters. Uh, you know, if we, if we were to, um, get a, a good handle on vehicle thefts and, uh, um, organized retail theft or general retail theft, we would drive our property crimes down significantly, just with those two categories. And then total accidents by quarter, you could see we also have another, uh, another spike there. For a long time, we were on a great trend moving down, um, up until we started coming out of COVID. Uh, and people started getting back out on the roads and we've seen a lot more aggressive driving. Uh, we've seen a lot more, um, uh, just high speed. Uh, and it's not just in Lakewood. That is, that is regionally that we're seeing that. Um, and some of that, uh, is driven by the amount of stolen cars that are out there too. I mean, that, um, they are not generally law-abiding folks when they're out in the road. So, um, we, we do see, you know, several collisions that have been caused by people in stolen cars driving recklessly or driving to get away from us. Uh, and that's, um, the other thing that continues to plague us. Uh, and I'll talk more about this in my, our year-end report, but, uh, eludes and pursuits. Um, you know, we've, with, uh, the change in the pursuit laws last year, we, you know, you can see distinctly in August of twenty twenty-one, uh, right after the, the laws went into effect and the word started getting out, people just started running from us. Uh, and a lot of times those are stolen cars. And, um, I showed at, uh, you know, Thursday night, I think I forwarded all of you, um, a video at one time too of, um, people, uh, people ramming their way through our cars, through apartment buildings to try and get away because this new law, the new, uh, pursuit laws have put a premium on getting out into the open road, um, because they know we can't chase them. Can we go to the, yes, sir? Oh, yes.
Would you say it is kind of dovetails with Mr. Randstetter's question? This one says eluding, eluding slash pursuit. Is this eluding issues, pursuit issues?
So there, uh, that is more just to encompass the general category. They're really, it's, it's eluding is the title of the report. So, um, it's not a pursuit unless we chase. Uh, and that is one thing that, um, I, I think is a, um, pretty critical distinction to make. And we did see an incident in Tacoma, um, a couple of weeks ago where, um, a Tacoma officer, county deputy maybe on Pacific Avenue got behind a car, uh, um, before they could even turn their lights on to, to try and stop them because there was some erratic driving, they took off. And, um, by the time the, the deputy did get out on the road and get their lights on, the other vehicle had already crashed into a car. And it was either a serious injury fatality to the, the people they hit. That wasn't a pursuit because they didn't have ti- a time to get behind the car, turn their lights on and chase them. That, but that is somebody that, um, you know, was getting out on the open road and doing whatever they could just to get away from police, even though they weren't, um, trying to stop them yet.
So. So this, a chart like this, I think, may be convincing to the occasional open-minded legislator. Uh, but if it says pursued.
I see what you're saying.
That's not what it, apparently not exactly what it means. These are people who eluded when you wanted to stop.
Right, right. Yeah, you're, you're, you're correct. That's i- in general. I think there might be a couple of pursuits mixed in there. Um, and I do have that number in my year-end report as well, that, um, that I've reported on every year, the number of pursuits that we have. Um, but, um, they're, they are a small percentage of the, the eludings that we saw.
Deputy Mayor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Chief, have you heard of, are you familiar with the, with something called a bowler wrap?
Bolo wrap?
Mm-hmm.
I have, and we actually had somebody come out and do a demonstration at the, uh, station on those.
Have you had a chance to use the runaways?
What's happening?
To catch them as they're running away?
No, so we, we haven't bought any. A bolo wrap is kind of exactly what it sounds like. It's a bolo. Uh, it's a string with two weighted ends. Uh, it's shot out of a, um, a, a gun, uh, that's made for that. And it's intended to wrap people up and, uh, to secure them, um, for one reason or another, whether they're trying to get away from you or, um, I think the most successful applications I've heard of are people that were, um, uh, in some sort of agitated state and, um, needed to be restrained from a distance. Um, I, they're, uh, they're an interesting tool. Their application is very limited. Um, I, like I said, we, we, I had enough interest to bring somebody out to at least do a demo. Um, but I think their applications are very limited for the, what they can do for us.
I saw a demonstration from North Carolina.
Uh-huh, yeah.
And the person was running and they just pulled a little gun out and shot it wrapped around his ankles and he went down. So he didn't have to chase him.
Yes, you would. It'd have to, yeah, wind up pretty good and not having to, to run after people's always a benefit as well.
Yeah.
Uh, but there's, yeah, those are, uh, you have to be in the right, right position. You have to get close enough to do it and be comfortable enough with the tool to actually shoot it at their feet and, and wrap them up. Um, but yeah, a moving target is, is tough with one of those, but it's an interesting tool. There's all kinds of good ideas coming out.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Randstetter?
Yeah. Chief, with the, the, the changes in, in legislation that have, um, played a role in, in, in tactics. How well is the academy up in Des Moines keeping pace with curriculum development and being able to do that? We have a significant number of new officers in training now and they, they started their training before the legislative session ended. But, but I don't know that the academy can adjust curriculum extremely quickly. Um, you know, how is, how, how, how is this annual changes that we've seen over the past couple of years impacting the ability to keep curriculum current? Or for you to have to do some retraining as people come out of the academy?
Yeah, that's a great question. They are, I think, like the rest of us, doing their best to keep pace with the changes.
Mm-hmm.
They, uh, you know, it's, you know, what force to apply is, has not really changed. It's when you can apply it. I think that's, that's the, the big change that they had to adapt to last year. And now that's changed again, so they're, they're pivoting again. Um, it, they're, again, just doing their best to, to adapt to it. On top of that, they're being given, um, other mandates for training, um, whether it's, um, duty to intervene training or crisis intervention or de-escalation. There's all these other, uh, curriculums that are being added on to what they, they were already doing. So they, they have a difficult environment that they're trying to, to manage up there. Um, but all I can say is, um, like the rest of us, they're doing their best to, to just pivot and, and change their training as the new laws come out.
Yeah, as far as curriculum is concerned, really what role do you and your counterparts from other departments have in, in influencing curriculum or of being able to comment on curriculum when it's being revised?
Uh, I will say next to none. Um, the makeup of the Criminal Justice Training Commission changed last year with that legislative session to go from, I think, eleven people on the panel to twenty-one and only, I think, three or four, uh, are designated law enforcement professionals. The rest are other, um, members of the community with different, um, I'll say agendas um, or backgrounds that, uh, our lawmakers thought was relevant for, um, determining, um, police curriculums. Okay, thank you. All right, uh, what that does, that segues well into, um, the year-end report. And, you know, the, I always started out by kind of talk, trying to provide an overview of what the year was about. And for us, it was really two things. It was, um, well, it was, there was COVID was still there, of course. But, uh, we also, um, had our legislative changes that we just talked about that were, uh, implemented, uh, or passed and, um, in effect, you know, all literally almost overnight. Um, so starting in, uh, June or July, we had all these new, uh, new laws that went into effect regarding use of force and pursuits and, um, you know, other, some others like decertification rules that, um, were more administrative, but still things, you know, this whole laundry list of laws that we had to try and implement. We, uh, I think as a department did a very good job of, uh, educating our folks and adapting as best as we could to, to those new laws. Um, I think some of the, the flaws, uh, became apparent, um, very quickly, uh, with, um, both the pursuits and the, the use of force laws. Um, particularly in the use of force laws as it, as it pertained to, um, individuals in crisis or juvenile runaways who we were no longer, um, allowed to use any amount of force to get them either to treatment or in the case of juvenile runaways, to take them into custody, which by the way is mandated under a different law. So we had conflicting laws, uh, with that. We also had the military equipment bill that, that prohibited, um, what they called, uh, fifty caliber or greater, um, firearms, which included just a regular shotgun or the platforms that we use to, to fire less lethal rounds. So, um, we, uh, interpreted that differently than some. We thought that there was other parts of the law that allows us to still use those, so we still did. Um, and that is with our legal advisors and, and we weren't the only ones in that position, but there was still a gray area. Um, during this last legislative session, they cleared up that and they cleared up the, uh, some of the use of force stuff, most of the use of force stuff. Um, what was left was the, um, pursuits and nothing changed with that at all. Uh, so there, they made, you know, I actually got hopeful towards the end of session. There was something that passed the Senate, passed the House, was amended in the House, went back to the Senate and then never called, brought up for a vote. I don't know what was in that amendment, but it was enough to not even, for the Senate to not even vote on. Um, so where we are now is exactly where we were last year, where there's a finite list of violent crimes as defined by RCW that we can pursue for, that does not include things like domestic violence, assault, um, or, um, residential burglary. Uh, yes, uh, you know, uh, and the threshold is still probable cause, not reasonable suspicion for anything other than DUI. For whatever reason DUI, we got reasonable suspicion for that. Um, so. Um, so um, that is still um, a problem and we see it daily. And I will, you know, I will say if something uh, isn't changed. I do foresee a time when people just stop registering their cars. Because if they don't have a, if, I mean, why bother if, if they don't have to, if we try to stop them, they don't have to stop. Why bother registering your car at all? Just go out and if we try to stop you, just keep going because we can't do anything. So that's, that's kind of where we're at and um, uh, as far as pursuits go. What we are doing though, uh, I, I don't want to make it sound like we're not doing anything about it. Um, we've had a couple of different emphases where we've had uh, officers out uh, on overtime in unmarked cars. Um, with a couple of officers in marked cars, uh, and the state patrol's airplane uh, helping us. Uh, in areas where we usually see a lot of uh, eluding. So the, we'll have the mark patrol cars try to stop, you know, a car, make a bunch of traffic stops. And if the cars take off, we have the, the plane follow them with the uh, unmarked cars sort of paralleling them. And then swooping in at the end whenever they stop. Um, that has been um, somewhat successful. Um, particularly in finding a lot of stolen cars and stolen property. Um, but that is very, that's a lot of, lot of manpower, a lot of money and a lot of effort um, put in for, for that. Um, and it's, you know, we'll, we'll keep trying. The hopes is that the word gets out that Lakewood's doing something. So try and avoid Lakewood. Um, if nothing else, that's, I'm fine with that message getting out there. Um, but that's where we are with uh, some of the legislative stuff and the pursuits. Um, it is uh, it's disheartening for a lot of our officers. Um, and. Um, you know, they, they str- they still struggle with it, the, that change and just watching people drive away from them and us. From some serious stuff sometimes, let's just have them to wave goodbye. Um, now, the other outcome of that last year is we had uh, a, a significant percentage of our department decide to leave. Some of that was people retiring because teaching an old dog new tricks is not easy and they were near retirement and figured. You know, I, I don't think this old dog can learn these new tricks and I'm done. Uh, the other, we also saw a small handful leave uh, the, the profession altogether. Um, who weren't retirement age and a couple moved out of state to be cops in another state. Uh, all told, it was about twenty people that we lost, which is about twenty, you know, over twenty percent of our department. Um, and uh, that significantly impacts our ability to meet the service levels that, that we've come to expect. Um, we had to shut down our property pro act uh, unit, um, which does a lot of the property crimes investigations. Then doubt our traffic unit, shut down our special ops, which is our um, uh, narcotics and vice investigations. Uh, and reassign most of the NPOs back to patrol. And that was all just to, just, just to staff our basic patrol function, which is what we have, you know, we need to be able to. Staff our emergency response um, function and when people call nine one one, have the people to go. So that, tho- those two things, um, the, the legislative changes. And the subsequent um, departure of so many people at it, at, at once was really what dominated us. Uh, uh, in our efforts last year. Now, um, we, we didn't just lay back. We also, you know, with uh, all the people leaving, we reassigned a detective and a sergeant that were um, in special ops. To, to do nothing but background. Um, and to, we look for efficiencies in the hiring process. And we um, ended up hiring, as you know, close to twenty people. Um, I think twelve of whom were interloped. Um, ten-ish, right around ten or eleven. Um, eight or nine are up in the academy uh, right now, eight in one class. Um, so it, it was a very successful effort to get people hired. As you know, though, the problem is that um, they don't count for several months. Um, but we do have a good crop of laterals too, that we've managed to um, convince to come over and as I, you know, I think you've heard me say or express that. Um, one of the factors that they cite for wanting to leave their department and come here is the notion that they, that. That they're supported here um, by the council, the community and the department. So um, that does make a difference and, and, you know, I think I was asked the other night about the morale at the department. Uh, I think that's a very good example of where morale is when our own officers are encouraging other people and selling the department. And not just to, to, you know, just any old cops, we've got people convincing their relatives to come work for us. So uh, we've had, you know, we've got a couple siblings, a spouse and um, that, that have come. So we're, you know, we're doing something right and, and, you know, creating an atmosphere where people want to come work here. It's just a product of the, the process that takes so long. That's going to be a while before we can really, you know, see the benefits of, of all that. So getting into some of the numbers, you know, we, we always like to, to put the chart that goes back to two thousand and four. Uh, so we can see the trend line for where we were when we started as a department and where we are now. Um, we have had that, you know, that increase over the past couple of years that again is driven by property crimes. Um, I do, you know, I have some optimism about getting a handle on that uh, over the, you know, next year. Once we get some people out and are able to put some more effort into um, investigating some of those and with the jails opening up again will help as well.
Do you find or do, do the folks find that it's? Handful of the same bad actors over and over again?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Uh, um, there's, without a doubt, it's, it, it's exactly what you described. And so what I've said, there's, there's, you know, it isn't just one thief per car. It is, you know, one thief per twenty cars. Uh, and if that person is out, they're stealing. That's just what they know how to do. Um, but if we can take that one person or some of the other high priority offenders off the street and, and get them in jail. For whatever happens after that. I know that being arrested and going to jail has been, um, you know, uh, deemed. You know, inappropriate or, you know, not the best option, but for public safety, sometimes it is. Uh, and if we can get some of those folks in jail and off the street, they can, at the felony level. Yeah, they can't be out stealing cars.
Yeah, wha- what is the status of the jail? The county jail?
Uh, they have recently re uh, or opened up or eased some of their restrictions and added some other. Um, I think um, very worthwhile charges to allow us to book in. Um, possession, unlawful possession of a firearm for one, which was, that was really, I think, troubling. When we were ha- catching people with guns that, that weren't legally allowed to possess them and we're having to let them walk away. Um, but now we can get them booked in, so they're, they're not one hundred percent open, but they're also, um, they are easing the restrictions somewhat.
How about for auto theft? Because wasn't that one where they would, if you got them somehow, because we can't pursue. They wouldn't, that wasn't bookable. Is that bookable now?
We can book in now and we also have um. Uh, a little more flexibility in at least being able to present an argument to a lieutenant down there to uh, make an exception for somebody. So we've, we've been able to do that and get some people, you know, who just needed to be, you know, off the street and get them uh, booked in.
So ex- I'm not a lawyer, so explain unlawful possession of a firearm means most of the time that I am. A convicted felon.
That's correct.
Supposed to have, so I'm caught for something. Um, you find a gun on me, hey Paul, you know, you're not supposed to have this. I go. So theoretically, that should start a whole chain of events, right? So um, right, if I'm on parole or something, which I assume a lot of these folks are, that's a violation of my parole.
A probation.
A probation. Does that mean I go back to prison or the state isn't? Was the state just turning around and saying, hey, he's, you know, he's really actually a good guy. Let's let him go?
No, I can't, I can't really speak that, that far downstream about what the probation officers and, or the Department of Corrections are doing.
Okay.
I will tell you that both uh, Deputy Calada and Officer Roche from up in Everett were killed by people who um. Were convicted felons and in possession of firearms unlawfully.
Very lengthy, yeah. The guy in Everett had a, a lot of priors.
Right, right. So it's, it's a serious charge and we need to be able to, if we want to get a handle on some of the gun crime. We need to be able to hold the people accountable that have the guns that aren't supposed to have them. And that's, you know, this is at least a step towards that.
Well, yeah, it looks like from the stats for the fourth quarter, I mean, you are, you are doing that, right? You are, you are finding people in possession.
We are and just like, uh, yeah, and just like, um, you know, we'd mentioned uh, just a few people committing a lot of the, the vehicle thefts or property crimes. You know, we've, there's a small group of people that are committing a lot of the, the assaults as well, the shootings. We've had several shootings. It's the same small group of people going back and forth and whether it's, you call it a gang, whatever you want to call it. Um, there's some, you know, dispute between groups of people, usually juveniles. Uh, who get their hands on guns and, and start shooting each other. So um, getting our, our hands on those folks also, you know, has a, a kind of an exponential effect. On a person's crimes, just like it would property crimes.
So once they do the shooting, that, that's a felony in itself.
That's correct.
And then if they go out on the street and do something crazy again, if they're in possession of firearm at that point, then they're felony possession. And that's felony charge number two.
Right, but they don't have, um, you're not con- considered a felon until you're convicted, so.
True, we gotta get them.
Yeah.
Held accountable, right? Mr. Anderson.
Back to the juveniles, you know, there's some, a movement among some that all juveniles should be diverted. No one should be incarcerated if they go out and kill people. Uh, what's your current experience with uh, Pierce County with respect to? The treatment of juvenile felon charged with violent felonies?
Yeah, they are, um, my experience is they're buying into that, that philosophy. That um, they want to do everything they can to explore treatment before uh, incarceration, which I'm fine with. But um, there are a lot, in a lot of cases, releasing them back to the same environments that created the problems to begin with. And for a lot of people that advocate for that, um, I think there's a complete detachment from the reality of what some of these um, kids are out doing. Um, they're not out stealing gum. I mean, there, there's serious um, violent offenses that they're out doing, whether it's. Um, you know, robberies or shootings or homicides. Um, I, I think more effort needs to be put into what happens post arrest and post conviction. But um, but we're just re- releasing them or focusing all your efforts on getting them back out to. The same environment that created them in the first place, I think is unhealthy for them and uh, damaging to public safety. Uh, so as you can see, dispatch calls for service remain, have remained relatively flat. You know, there, there's some uh, some decrease from, from last year and uh. The, or excuse me, a little bit of de- increase in dispatch calls from last year. Uh, and then arrests have gone down from seventeen hundred to fourteen hundred and I always include those uh, in the same graph. Because I, I like to show the, um, even on the, the years when we make a lot of arrests. On, you know, the, the low percentage of the work we do that actually involves an arrest. Um, for a lot of the, a lot of the times, we will get a call for service and it's so, it's for something other than a criminal offense that ends up in an arrest. Um, and I also like to, you know, have the total crimes and the, the dispatch crimes. And that difference in between there is a self-initiated activity, whether it's traffic stops or um, security checks or anything like that. And then, uh, as you've seen every quarter, uh, you know, obviously it holds out at the year end. The top uh, call, type of call uh, i- are welfare checks by far. I went to two uh, this afternoon. So, I mean, it's, the, we, we get them all the time, whether it's. Uh, like the two I went to was a tax person saying they thought their client sounded sick. Uh, and when they talked to him on the phone and they were worried about him, um, so I went and checked and he had been checked into a hospital. Uh, and then the other one was somebody laying on a sidewalk that looked like they were hanging out into the road. Um, and that person, I drove by there and that person was sitting on the sidewalk with their feet just off the curb. So we, it, that's, those are two good examples of, of the kinds of things that are encompassed by welfare checks, but we get a lot of them. Uh, and then property crimes by year, uh, you know, as you could see, I mean, it, it, it's what I've been saying. Um, the, you know, there's been the, the rise in uh, since the start of COVID and property crimes. Um, for the reasons that we've all heard, whether it's jail or, or lax laws or, or whatever it is. That the rise is there and it's, it's significant.
Is there some consistent themes in the property crimes, what they're stealing, where they're targeting? Uh, the victims either had unlocked doors, windows, etc. Are there some consistent themes?
Uh, the themes we look for in like stolen cars are types of cars. Um, and what we've seen lately are Ford trucks.
It's mostly property crimes or mostly vehicles you're, you're telling us then?
Uh, a lot of them, yeah. I mean, the, like you said, the, um, uh, then there's the retail theft site, which is something different. But the, like with the vehicle thefts, um, once somebody learns how to steal a car, they spread that, that word around. And that becomes the popular car to steal. For years, it was a Honda, you know, mid nineties Hondas, which are still popular, by the way. Um, but uh, recently, as the last few weeks, Ford F one, or last few months, Ford F one fifties have been just all the rage. So somebody figured out how to steal them, uh, and uh, told their friends and that's what's getting stolen.
Put it on TikTok or whatever.
Yes.
Do I need to go check?
Probably. Uh, but other, other uh, things that we look at, you know, when you, um, commonalities in um. You know, like what's stolen, it's kind of hard to say with retail theft, they will go in and grab armloads of whatever they can and then just walk out. I do think we're seeing a change in attitude by retailers. They aren't as afraid of um, the negative publicity for um, stopping somebody and, and have, you know, having a. You know, a Philadelphia Starbucks situation on their hands. They, they are losing money, uh, and a lot of money. Um, to retail theft and they're, they're taking some steps to stop that, whether it's private security or you've seen over at Safeway, the. Um, the security camera that's very visible up on the pole and on the trailer with the, the blue light on it. Uh, so Lowe's has one of those as well. Um, yeah, there, there's, the retailers are losing a lot of money. And for as much as they might be concerned about bad press, they're not charities. They're in it to make money and if they're losing it, they're going to do something about it.
Do you see more of them actually hiring or training their own private security to take care of things?
Yes, or yeah, to have uh, at least some kind of a visible presence in or around the store. Uh, it depends on who they hire. That, some do, I think the insurance for that is, is pretty significant. So uh, I think most lean towards unarmed security.
I have a anecdotal story. They work with the Fife Police Department quite a bit, but it's. Sportco out there in Fife and they have all sorts of challenges, but they, you know, their guys, they'll tackle people. Take them down and hold them until Fife gets there and handcuff them and.
Yep.
You know, they're pretty aggressive about it.
Yeah, and, and word will get out, you know, the tide will change, but we've got, you know, look at, look at where we got to. We got to a point where people will go into a retail store, grab an armload of stuff, walk past the employees, say Merry Christmas and keep on going. Uh, and the employees can't do anything. So that's, that's a pretty low point to get to before things start to turn around.
Right.
So Chief?
Yes, sir.
Just uh, on that retail theft, have, I, I saw this in Washington DC not too long ago. Uh, probably about six months ago, they, where uh, depending on the neighborhood and their history. Even the, the drugstores were locking up things that were, you would think of as normal, like toothpaste was behind. Uh, it's a lock screen, like it was.
Razor blades.
Like, like it was a computer app, apparatus or something. Have we seen any of that locally where? The retailers are so fed up that they're locking everyday items up?
Um, not that I've really gone in and taken inventory of. I, I mean, I know that. Um, it's frustrating when you go just to buy a shaving razor and you have to have an employee come and unlock it. But um, that's, that, things like that, but I, I, I couldn't give you a, any updated list of. Items that they're, they're focusing on. Um, moving on to, I mean, the, the next couple of things, society crimes by years, you look, it's, you know, gone down and down and down. Some of that from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one is um, a direct result of the Blake decision. Um, with uh, which, you know, and the, the legislature's subsequent. I, I don't want to use the word fix, but their, their, their law change uh, in, as a result of that. Um, which basically decriminalized a lot of drugs. Um, that, you know, I, I've talked before about, you know, there being other offenses that, you know, there's a primary offense usually. Whether it is shoplifting or vehicle theft or something, that happens first and then you find drugs on them subsequent to the, to the arrest. That, um, we still, we, we're still getting the thefts and the, the vehicle thefts and we just aren't charging them with the drugs. And that's reflected in the stats here. And then accidents, again, I talked about those. I, that's, you know, it is disheartening because that's, we were on such a good downward trend for so long, then to see it spike from twenty twenty or twenty twenty to twenty twenty one was, and a twenty percent spike at that was kind of disheartening. But, you know, I, once traffic, I think, normalizes a little bit, once we can get some traffic officers out, back out doing enforcement, because we do know that that changes behavior, then we will hopefully see that number come down. Provided people pull over for us. And then some of the other, you know, sort of the unseen parts of the department, you know, our property room, which for those of you that have ever toured the station, it's kind of a weird thing to brag about, but I'm, I really like our property room. It is Erica, Dallas and Anna that work down there do an outstanding job of, of just maintaining order. And in a property room, that is huge because you can get overwhelmed quickly. So they do a great job of managing it. We, you know, collected, they booked in four thousand pieces of evidence last year. And then at the front desk as well, you know, you could see the volume of people that, that come into the front desk or, or call the front desk. It's, it's a busy place up there.
What do people come in for walk-ins to ask for?
You name it. Yes, a lot of times they, people will think that every, every police department's the same and they, they walk in wanting something from the Eatonville Police Department or they'll, they'll want to file a report for something that happened somewhere else, but they happen to be close to our station or getting restraining orders served or turning in evidence or, yeah, you name it and people come in for it. Our behavioral health contact team going strong. However, Carolyn Seer has announced her retirement. Yes, and she announced it last week and this coming Friday will be her last day with us and with Greater Lakes. So she's gonna be a big loss. She was huge in implementing this program here. And, you know, it'll just be sad to see her go. Like anybody that retires, I'm happy for, but that'll be sad to see her go. And Zach, who's also in the picture, is our, the newest case manager that we brought on after the last budget cycle. He will be able to pick up that, some of that slack until we see what we want to do with that second position, I think quite well. So we've had that overlap and that integration. So I think we'll still be able to maintain service levels. It just, it's hard when you see the person that helps to found the program move on. So that's both her and Ralph now that, in the last year that have moved on. For marine services, we were still out on the water. We had an exceptionally hot summer last year. So we were out there and what you see pictured there is our newest marine, marine vessel that we purchased last year that we just now got out on the water that has a lot more capabilities and actually is more purpose-built for, for what we do. But you'll see us out there on the lake more this year and that's the boat season.
So mostly stay out in American Lake?
Yes, yes.
Can't get in a Silicon Lake, that's good.
No, I don't think we can make it.
Can you pursue on the water?
What's that?
Can you pursue on the water?
That is a great question.
Yeah, Chief, when it says a hundred and thirty-one total officer on water patrol hours, that generally there's more than one officer on a craft, so is that like half, like sixty hours of?
Yeah, I get what you're saying. Yeah, that would be, because there is generally two people out at any one time. Well, there would, we would mandate that. There wouldn't be just one person on a boat.
So, so sixty total hours, that's like five hours a week over the course of a summer?
Yes, it's, remember, it's not a full-time unit. It is ancillary duties and these, we lost several MSU members to retirement last summer. We also, we try to pick the high-volume times to be out and obviously when it's good weather. So it's, yeah, it's not, that would, I'd trust your math on that.
So do you envision that that's not gonna be increased significantly this summer?
I hope it would be. Some of it was staffing last year and just having the people that, that, to get out there on the boat and do it because it's not their primary duty. So we have the people that we're trying to staff patrol with, we're having more and more overtime just in patrol and people were getting burnt out and, and not getting them out. You know, it was harder and harder to find the people that had the time and the energy to get out on water. So I do hope to get more people out there this summer. We actually added some people to the Marine Services Unit, some of our newer people. So I do anticipate more hours on the water. Bike patrol, you know, out again when we could. It's, that's one where, I mean, there were times when it was just too hot to be out on a bike last year. They were, were out when they could and, and just like with Marine Services, we did lose some folks that were on our bike team to either retirement or resignation. Will need to get, still want to ramp that back up again.
Is it gonna need electrical bikes as they get older?
But maybe not a bad idea. And animal control, busy but not, not like we've been in the past, in years past, where going from crazy animal call to crazy animal call. It's, it's a lot of just routine domestic animal type stuff that they deal with now. You can see it was only seven potentially dangerous dog issues.
Minor suggestion to combine the two. We often get comments and requests for people to have some presence at Fort Silicon Park because people are not as proactive as they should be about leashing their dogs when they're walking. One thing that might be helpful in the summertime is to have a few of the bike guys just out there being present.
Yep.
And, you know, courtesy admonitions to say, hey, remember you gotta have your dog on a leash as opposed to actively ticketing. But I think having a presence out there periodically would go a long way.
Absolutely.
Having a little bit more compliance and making people happier.
Okay, absolutely. And then the Criminal Investigations Unit, you can see just the caseload that they dealt with. Forensic Services is exactly what it sounds like. Those are forensic services and they kind of serve us all of the other units when there's a request that comes, comes in for those. So and before, I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of those before I move on. Not really much more to share. The one thing I will say is, and Mr. Bokey, I think you've asked before about our homicide clearance rate. I looked the other day and going back to, I think, two thousand sixteen, we have one unsolved. And it is going to be a tough one to solve. It's, a homeless person was found shot to death in a, a trailer over at the Carwan Village Mobile Home Park. And it was an abandoned trailer. So very little evidence to, to support it that we can disclose, but that it'll just be a tough one. Doesn't mean it won't get solved. But I am, you know, proud to say that there is, that is only one in this many years of, of working.
See?
Yes.
Did we ever determine what happened to this person with the fire here on whether they grabbed and they cleaned this place? What, did we ever hear anything on that?
It is, it was arson. That's all we can say is for right now. We don't, we, it's hard to, that's all we can say for right now. I said it was arson.
Thank you.
So if he died, it would be felony murder.
Wow, look at the, you know, the lawyer helping out there. So the, with professional standards, as you know, that's our internal affairs and hiring backgrounds. And they were obviously with backgrounds and hiring kept very busy this last year. And there was also some internal affairs investigations going with it. And they also handle training. And as you can see, we had a total of fifteen thousand hours of training. That is another kind of a point of pride for me and something that I hear from officers that, that want to, from other agencies that want to come work here, is they value training. And that's, you know, when you're able to provide that much training for officers and that's both in-house and some external training, that makes a difference. And that's a very good selling point. It also helps, you know, build the professionalism of our department. Now, use of force, we, you know, included this every year for a lot of years. You know, we had a slight decrease from last year. And this is, you know, I think, you'll see the rise from two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen. I think that's more about us increasing our reporting than it is anything else. But the, you know, I, in twenty and twenty one, you see pretty much the same or, you know, just a couple incidents difference. I, I don't know what we'll see in the years to come, but certainly that's the, the laws amending use of force didn't really change that. So statistically, it stayed the same. And I also like to show and also like to point out the low percentage, no matter how you look at it, it's a low percentage of what we do, period, and it's a low percentage of arrests. I mean, year after year, we see it's easily less than ten percent of all arrests require any use of force at all. And that has been consistent year after year. So it's just, for me, it's, I think it's interesting to look at how much focus we put on something that we do so infrequently. Yes, sir.
Is that ten percent number consistent across departments in the region or that? Or is it, is our percentage lower than is found in most departments?
I haven't looked at a lot of departments, but those I have looked at, and that's, you know, across the country and looked at different stats as well, the, that is fairly consistent with other agencies. Now, here's the pursuit. So there were twenty-five pursuits and these were where we actually chased somebody. The, you can see the reasons for the pursuits. The, let's see, the traffic infractions, reckless vehicle, felony property crime, all those categories would have been before the change in law in June. So, and of those twenty-five pursuits, seven were terminated by us and then one stopped voluntarily. So, and those were, again, pursuits where we turned our lights on and we're able to actually chase after them. So we've done a good job, I think, of, you know, up until last year of managing our own pursuits. But there's, of those twenty-five, I think, if I remember right, about eighteen were before the change in law. And then, you know, the, I always like to do the recognitions and we talked about hirings and our retirements and, you know, just a lot of the people that, in fact, I think every person up there under retirements helped found the department in two thousand four. And then obviously our new hires is a mix of laterals and entry level. But it is, it's just different when you see the, the people that you helped build this department with move on. And there's a brand-new enthusiasm that comes with new people and that's always exciting. But it is becoming a different department and it's, we hope to maintain some of our same culture and our, our same service levels. But it's just, it is definitely becoming a different department. And I think, you know, some of that's for the better. But, you know, e- even if you look at, you know, kind of some of our benchmarks, like two thousand nine, over half of our department was not here in two thousand nine. So for those of us that were here, it's still very personal. For those of us that are here, that got hired after, it's more of a historical note than anything personal. So it's just things like that that's, it's changing as a department. And that was our, our year last year. I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Questions, Mr. Brenson?
Yes, 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 yes. Thanks, Chief. I think, I want to say that it won the, the event at the pavilion recently in the, in the Pocahontas community where you covered some of what you did here. And the, and the reaction to that is, I think reinforces the, the fact that, that the community is still very much aware of the value of the department and, and values you and your folks for, for what they do and believes that you have the community's interests at heart to be able to go and do that. How is the body camera pilot program going?
Great question. I actually forgot mine in my office. It's in the charger. Otherwise, I have a nice, good example for you right here. It's actually going very well. There's, the bugs we are working on are more technical bugs than anything. And we actually have tomorrow is the first meeting between, like the city attorney and our assistant chief and lieutenant that's managing the program or getting together with the guild folks that are on their side, just to talk about how it's going and work through some issues. So, so far, it's going pretty well. I think it's, you know, what I can tell you is that through my role in PC fit, that the body cam, the instance where we've had body cam footage has made all the difference in the world in getting to a, I think, quicker understanding of what happened.
Anecdotally, are there any instances in, for our officers, where this has been a significant enhancement?
Not, not that I can think of offhand, no, no specific incidents. But keep in mind too, we had in-car cameras before we had these. So, and I've always thought some of the better footage came from in-car cameras, like people trying to ram through our vehicles and apartment buildings to get away. But the, I'm sure there's some out there we just haven't explored it enough yet.
In terms of legislation, two years ago, there was a piece of legislation that dealt with the arbitration process as related to departments being able to take disciplinary action and having to follow through. And there were some, some modifications to those rules. Have, have we had any experience where we've had cases dealt with through the new rules and are, are now those new rules working or are they, in fact, did they change things enough in your view?
Short answer to your question is no, we haven't had one to go, that's gone through the new process. The biggest part of that, those rule changes are the arbitrators are from a specific list that deals just with police cases from PERC. So I, I don't know how much of a difference that's going to make really. But that, from, from my perspective, was the biggest change, but we haven't gone through that yet.
Okay, and then the, the, there was recently some legislation that changed about where and some of the permissive rules regarding traffic enforcement cameras. Is, has that legislation led to any thought that that might be a way to help us with the fact that we've, your accident data, that there may be some locations that we could now put cameras that we weren't able to before or had before?
To be honest, I wasn't aware that there was, I was so focused on use of force and the other things, I wasn't aware data or any legislation that amended the rules for photo enforcement. But I will definitely look into that and get back to you.
And then I did want to comment that I, I think that I've heard some comments from some folks at the county and, and, and other places regarding Lakewood and other departments covering some patrol areas in the, in the aftermath of Deputy Calada's shooting. And, you know, appreciate you doing that. And Mr. Mayor, I saw your letter to Pierce County, to the Sheriff's Department. Unfortunately, it may be regionally appropriate Lakewood to send a letter to the city of ever that has experienced a loss that, that we know how that can impact the community and express our support for that. That's, that's all that I have. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And thank the folks for attending Officer Calada's. And thank the folks for attending Officer Calada's memorial service. It was good to have people there.
Absolutely. And there it wasn't just attending, there was a lot of, a lot of our folks helped with the planning and just the just being able to to hold it and and do what they could to help. And I, you know, especially for those of us that were here in two thousand nine, we we will always remember what other people did for us, and we'll we'll always do what we can for them. So glad to. All right. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. You can see the items tentatively scheduled for our next regular council meeting on April four. I won't read the the list of items coming before you. It'll be on your packet this week. Now turn reports by the city manager.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. A few updates for you. The first is got a couple of proclamation requests. Actually, one just came in to Mayor Whalen, and that is to recognize April as Fair Housing Month. And that request comes from the Tacoma Pierce County Association of Realtors. And if the council is so inclined to do that, they've requested to have that as part of your April fourth regular council meeting. Also, the Lakewood Water District has requested this body to issue a proclamation on Monday, May second, recognizing the month of, actually, the week, the first week of May as Water Week. And so again, if the council is so inclined to do that.
It's a liquid asset.
We can do that. So, Mayor, if you want to give me some direction on whether
Let's do it.
Do those two. I got the next few items. I got nothing but good news. So the first is that earlier today, the city was notified that we have received a Safe Routes to School grant totaling six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And that's to put in sidewalks on north side of One Twelfth in support of Lake Louise Elementary School between Far West and Holden. This is actually part of a request of funds that we we applied for in two thousand twenty. However, the state supplemental budget included an additional ten million, and so our project was pretty close to that cutoff, and so we have made the cutoff, and so it's now funded. We also learned today that TIB has awarded the city a seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollar Complete Streets Grant. I recall earlier this year, I communicated to the council that they had notified us that we were in the running for five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand, or seven fifty. Well, we got the seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And that's to design and construct a new pedestrian sidewalk on the south side of Angle Lane between Hipkins and Elwood and by Fort Stilicon Park, and then to build a shared use path within the right of way of Fort Stilicon Park from Elwood or where the parking lot is all the way down to eighty-seventh to the new sidewalks along Stilicon Boulevard that will over by Dutch Brothers.
Just trying to visualize where that's going to go, how that's going to do it. The shared use paths, paths, it'll go from where to where?
So Elwood on the Fort Stilicon side?
Yeah.
On the on the on the other side of the trees.
The other side of the trees.
That's correct. You have Elwood, you have a ditch, you have a tree line, and then on the other side of that.
Okay.
So that's parallel to Elwood. Yes, Councilman.
Great.
I don't know. I think at this point in time, we're we'll go through the design phase, whether or not it'll be natural or perhaps some kind of gravel or asphalt, something, something like that, but to allow for both pedestrians and bicycles. Design will begin later this year and be looking at constructing next next year. Under the umbrella of some good news, as you know, the state legislature, you know, convened, and what we found in the supplemental budget was an allocation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in support of a multimodal transportation study awarded to the Thurston County Thurston Regional Planning Council to examine options for multimodal high capacity within between mid Thurston County and Pierce County. And this has to do with the Niskualei Delta Project. And that request came from the Senate Transportation Chair as a follow-up to the seventy-five million dollars that was appropriated in support of the Delta Project. So we went in and we looked at the language, and it's pretty much exactly the same as we had requested. But our request was within Pierce County between Lakewood and DuPont or down to the county line. So and I don't know if the Senate Chair recognizes this, but that's what we were looking for. But this one, you know, incorporates Thurston County. And rather than the money being awarded to us or to Washita, it's been awarded to TRPC. So we're going to reach out to TRPC since it's going to involve us. And, you know, I I think we're going to be able to get this work done. That's that's our read of it as at this point in time. The the state legislature did assign a deliverable date, which is December first of this year on that. And of course, you know, one of our motivations as a part of that is to look for an opportunity to co-locate or identify a location for a potential EMTRAC station at some time in the future. Also, we're working with our federal delegation, Congresswoman Strickland's office, as well as Senator Cantwell and Senator Murray's offices on submitting for congressionally directed spending or earmarks is really what it is. And so we are going to be resubmitting our South Tacoma Way project from eighty-eighth to eightieth, the North City Limits. This is the same project that we had submitted last year, and our request is going to be for two point five million, and the city does have the matching funds available to do that. This is the last segment of South Tacoma Way, right there in the heart of our international district. So much so, we were able to get support letters from the city of Tacoma, the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce, Pierce County Library System, our Pierce County Council member, the County Executive's Office, Lakewood Water District, West Pierce Fire and Rescue, Pierce Transit, and then a new one, the Korean Women's Association. And I want to thank and recognize Michael Vargas, our Assistant to the City Manager and Policy Analyst for spearheading that and reaching out to all of those agencies and and getting those getting those letters. Along the line of the federal front, we were contacted by Congresswoman Strickland's office last week to see if we wanted to provide some language in in the National Defense Authorization Act bill, which is currently being developed for next year, the NDAA. And so the city and SSMCP, we're working together to develop some language to further facilitate and streamline the acquisition of property in the north-north clear zone. We have also been in contact with Senator Cantwell's office on this to get their support, as well as we'll be reaching out to Senator Murray's office as well. The senior
Could you give me the draft on that so I can send it to the FOAC?
Actually, it was included in my weekly update, but
Well, to yeah, to send to the the suggestion language so that the ADC Federal Outreach and Advocacy Committee works on NDAA language.
I'll refer
Sell the sell the red, but very important inserts.
Got it. Then we continue our discussions with Pierce County as it relates to reopening our senior activity center at the county-owned Lakewood Community Center. You know, as I think I reported previously, they're going through their due diligence on facility needs there to keep the building open for the next thirty years. Latest update that we have is they've identified about twelve million dollars in needs for the building, including an immediate need as it relates to the roof and some other things. As a part of that, they reached out to us to get a letter of support for a, I think it's a three million dollar federal grant. We probably turned that around in about, I think, maybe thirty-five minutes or so because we wanted, just wanted to let you know that's how serious we are about opening this, reopening the building. But along those lines, the county is trying to figure out a way to get that building open, probably looking at May or so on on that. Meanwhile, we continue to be a little we look for other places to provide some senior programs. Matter of fact, there met the men's coffee group, they met here in one of our council, one of our conference rooms last week. So we're trying to get a little creative there. Last week, we were contacted by Comcast, and they're collaborating with the Federal Communications Commission, FCC, to implement the Affordable Connectivity Program or ACP. This is a program that funds provides funds for internet service providers such as Comcast to subsidize internet service for new and existing customers, particularly lower and low-income folks. Long story short, Mr. Vargas attended a webinar last week, and we're going to look to partner with Comcast to try and create a community engagement program to get the word out about the program and the importance of it, and really a focus in our more qualified census areas. But I'm sure there's other people within the community that could benefit from this. So more to come on that. And we're probably also going to look to reach out to Click, because I know Click provides cable and internet services here. Those are kind of the two major providers to see if they're going to be doing this as well for their customers. But certainly Comcast is they kind of reached out to us like I said, last week. As it relates to your calendars, this Wednesday, there's two events going on. The first in the morning at zero eight, it's a virtual event. The Lakewood Communities and Schools is going to be holding their annual Champions for Youth Breakfast. And I know you all provided some video on that, so you'll get to see yourself on that. And that is at a zero eight, zero eight to zero nine and on Wednesday.
Yeah, it's all Zoom, right?
It's all Zoom. That's correct. And so if you if you haven't registered, you need to register online, and then they'll send you a Zoom link.
Okay.
And then later that afternoon, Community Healthcare is going to be holding their Lunch and Laughter event at the Hotel Murano. Somebody keeps booking my calendar right up to the event, so I'm gonna, it's from eleven to one, so I'm going to try and I know myself and a couple of our staff are going to be attending. But that's always a really nice event, it's a fundraiser event, but they always put on a great show. I'm quite sure the comedian is, but every year that I've attended, it's been well worth it. So if you have a chance and the opportunity to to attend that as well. And then not this weekend, but the following weekend, we're going to have our community cleanup on both Saturday and Sunday from eight to two, eight AM to two PM. And I I know there's still a couple of slots available if you want to come out and volunteer and help out there. So that's that's kind of what we got going on. But with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Any questions for Mr. Coffee? I just sent a message. Is the CISL registration something that we could just maybe have a raise of hands? She could do it, or do we have to pay a fee to start that, or is it just a donation on our own at the end?
Yeah, it's, there's no cost to attend the event, Mayor. But there is, but it is a fundraiser, and yes, and it's
So if you could register for me, since there's no cost to the city to register, you wouldn't mind. Be great. Just because I'm so crazy. There you go. It's welcome. Yeah, yeah, no more bacon. All right, very good. Well, thank you. We're going to quickly go around and do city council comments because we do have a closed session we need to get to and leave our esteemed guest waiting for us too long. Services. Okay, Mr. Brandstetter.
I'm fine, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Boke.
Couple of things. One, excited about another. We're now on to One Hundred and Twelfth Street, so that that segment between Far West and you just kind of wide open. It's not nice shoulders, but it really is not pedestrian friendly. So I'm excited about that. I do want to make the city manager aware, and I'm sure Ms. Spear is aware, the ARPA funding for the cities for the sewer is starting to move. It's it's they're gonna, Public Works is going to present to the count, the county council on like May first about the program, and then it's open for thirty days or something like that. There were some. Anyway, that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Farmer.
I'm fine, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Anderson.
Tuesday was PRAB, and they went over the naming process, and we'll have some recommendations shortly. Looks good, kind of in keeping with our consensus, I think, in our discussions. Thursday was Puget Sound Regional Council. That meeting was mostly people gushing over the chairs of the transportation committees from the state, saying what a good job they did and being patted on the back. Today, along with the mayor, I attended the Lucas Landing dedication at Stilicon Ferry Dock, being renamed in honor of Ron Lucas. That was a nice event, but I thought, well done. And next Monday, I will be MIA in Disneyland.
Very nice. I will not be with Mickey Mouse. I will be at home. Wednesday, I attended the tenth Congressional District Roundtable with Congresswoman Strickland and members of the South Sound, and we chatted about all sorts of interesting things, and we brought forth the earmark, so to speak, for the South Tacoma Way project, as well as the NDAA language for the Clear Zone work that we're continuing to do. So it was a good conversation. She was appreciative of all of our collective efforts. Thursday evening, we had the Community Coffee House. I thought it went well. It was public safety and community policing. My hat is off, and kudos go to staff for setting that up at the pavilion. And certainly, the chief did a great job, as did our judge, Lisa Mansfield, and we also had a few prosecutors there. So thank you, Ms. Walter, for making your folks available. And I thought collectively, the the give and take with members of the public, there are actually folks we don't normally see that actually came and enjoyed it. And comments about the opportunity for interaction, just kind of, you know, socializing, we're we're good. And so I think it's, you know, a win-win. So we'll do more of those. Did the Lucas Landing dedication today with Mr. Anderson. It was really a great event and wonderful to see Mrs. Lucas there as well with her family. So I was proud to be there for Lakewood. The SHAPE meeting is coming up this week. There are two meetings. Are you doing both of them? You're you got both of them. So I'm off the proverbial hook. All right. Well, thank you. So with that, we'll adjourn this meeting, and we'll move into closed session. Oh, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Moss, I jumped ahead of you, didn't I? You are the top of the heap. I'm sorry.
I'd be brief. Councilmember Bell was supposed to attend the North Neighborhood Association meeting last week. I attended for her. They only had thirty minutes, and they had a police officer there, and he took up the time. So I never got a chance to speak, but I just wanted to know that the city was represented at that meeting. And on Saturday, I attended a conference put on by Vibrant Schools. And I did, I wasn't sure what it was going to be about or how if it didn't appear to have anything to do with the city. But the title was to purge to surge following COVID. And I thought that sounded interesting, so I decided I would go. I'm glad I did. It was held at La Quinta Inn a Friday and Saturday. As Friday was just a networking opportunity to meet new people and introduce yourself. And then on Saturday, they had breakout groups, and you broke out in different groups, and you, one of the questions was what are you doing or what is your city doing to pass a baton to our youth? Which gave me an opportunity to brag about our youth council. And just so happened, one of our youth council members, Pat previous was there, and we might remember Latise McCormick? Latise? She is awesome. She's attending U-Dub Tacoma. She's working on a political political, physical, and economic is her major. She's a lobbyist in Olympia. She is president for the AW, AW, ACW, okay? She is president for the youth on the AW, I can't even say it, AWC. I keep hitting them two words. She's president for the youth represented on the AWC. And I wanted to share that because I wanted to make sure that we realized that our students are doing great things, and some of them are staying in local. So it was a great event, and it ended with a comedian that I had seen at the Tacoma Theater from Vegas. It was really good, and then it had a dance. So it was a good event. And I'm glad I went, so thank you.
I'm glad you went, too. Thanks for the report. And I did save the best for last. That was the reason for it. Yeah, exactly, exactly. Okay, so now we will move into closed session pursuant to RCW forty-two, thirty-one, forty, sub four, sub A.
Okay, so now we will move into closed session pursuant to RCW 423140 sub 4 sub A related to collective bargaining. Didn't I say we're adjourned?
I just want to be clear that when you do that, it's not an executive session, it's a closed session. Just making sure that.
Yes, we are adjourned because.